Actually skip over introductions. We have a lot of people in the room. But just in the interest of time, I want to make sure we sort of dive into the agenda and just, I'm Andrew Scott. I'm the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee and I use he/him pronouns. As people speak, you can feel free to introduce yourself at that point, but I don't want to take the time if it's okay with everybody to just sort of skip over the overall introductions. But today we are going to have a couple of different agenda items. We're going to hear from Oregon Department of Transportation, a presentation on the I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project. And thank you for them for coming and talking to us as a committee. And it's one of the reasons why my committee is not normally this well attended, but in honor of the subject matter, we have some additional people who have come, which is great. And then we're going to do some legislative updates. We're going to talk a little bit about state school fund and where that stands. And then we do have two people sign up for public comment. I do believe, Kara, both of those people who signed up, signed up around the I-5 project specifically. So if it's okay with other committee members, that public comment is scheduled for 6:20. I will move that right after the ODOT presentation and our discussion. So after we're sort of completed our discussion, then we'll do the public comments specifically on that agenda item and then move on. We have 45 minutes for the ODOT topic. We have a little extra time if we need to go over that for conversation. But I will just ask that we just sort of keep questions and discussion focused. And I think I'm going to start by turning it over to Brendan. And thank you for the presentation earlier this week. It was helpful to have that in advance. And then if we can limit sort of the presentation aspect to no more than 20 minutes, and that'll leave lots of time for board questions and discussion. And just before I turn it over to you Brendan, any other committee members or board members have any questions before we dive in? Going once, going twice. Okay, Brendan and team, take it away.
Thank you Chair Scott. I can see that my cube lit up so you can hear me. Board members, good evening. Thank you for having us. For the record, my name is Brendan Finn. I'm the Director of the Urban Mobility Office within the Oregon Department of Transportation. We will keep things succinct because we do very much want to get to your questions and be respectful of your time here this evening. So briefly, I wanted to at least set the stage a little bit around the Rose Quarter Improvement Project and how it fits into the Urban Mobility Office and the greater plan that we're working on called the Comprehensive Congestion.
I guess those be listening to this, but yeah.
Amy, Amy, I think you're not on.
Welcome. So I'll continue to jump back into it. Well, the Urban Mobility Office was created about a year and a half ago. And of course, there's a saw going off in the background here. Pardon that if you can't hear me. This is a great virtual world. The Urban Mobility Office was created about a year and a half ago by the Oregon Transportation Commission to take on some of the bigger projects, programs, and policies that were created through HB 2017, which was the last large transportation package passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor. So we're tasked with some of those bigger projects, as well as the creation and implementation of the CCMMP, which is a long acronym. We love our acronyms in government, the Comprehensive Congestion Management and Mobility Plan. And what's behind this plan and what the legislature and the OTC asked us to do is to think comprehensively about the system in the Portland metropolitan region as it relates to the state system. Stop doing the old approach that we've taken from the past, which is to look at everything, look at the system by a project, project by project basis. That's had, that's done nothing right by equity and it's done nothing right by climate. So what we've done through this plan is taken away this project by project approach, which only moves bottlenecks from one area to the next, continuing to contribute to bad air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. And again, look at the system in a comprehensive manner. So it's comprised of a suite of strategic investments that address safety and seismic vulnerability issues, as well as a couple of the largest bottlenecks on the West Coast, which you'll hear more about here shortly. But the kind of overall umbrella to the system-wide plan is really embedded in our tolling and congestion pricing program. This system-wide through the I-5, we call it the river to river. So from the Boone Bridge up to the Interstate Bridge, and then on the I-205 to the Glen Jackson Bridge, we will be having a congestion pricing system through the, sorry, the value pricing pilot program through the FHWA. Sorry, more acronyms. And this program will manage, will have, will have two main purposes. One is to manage the demand that's on the system so we can have a reliable flow of through, through the region that improves air quality and then improves reliability in the system. And it also will generate revenue that will fund some of these critical modernization and safety projects. So that's just my really quick overview because I wanted to give board members, Chair Scott, a little flavor of what we're looking at and how the I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project fits into this bigger picture of how we're trying to address congestion in the metropolitan region on a comprehensive level. So with that, I want to turn it over to our diligent program Director, Megan Channel, who has been overseeing that. I'm also, we're also joined by Erica Warren, who's one of our strategic advisors and overseeing the Historic Albina Advisory Board. So with that, and to keep this succinct, as I promised you, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Megan Channel.
Thank you Brendan. And thank you Portland Public School Board for having us this evening. As Brendan said, I'm Megan Channel and I'm the Project Director for the Rose Quarter Project. I will do, I'll move pretty swiftly through the slides, just kind of giving a high-level overview of the project. Erica will join me to talk about partnerships and community engagement. And then I will provide some information on the design and construction details that I know you as a board are interested in learning about. So Courtney, you can go to actually slide three here. So just kind of for orienting everyone, this is the project area. So the I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project is focused on I-5 between 84 to the south and I-405 to the north, and also looking at the local street system within the Broadway-Widler interchange. In the early 1960s, during an era of national highway building, we know that construction of I-5 and other public and private developments disconnected the community and resulted in significant displacement here, and namely displacement of the African-American community out of the central city. So this is important to acknowledge ODOT's role in this. And as we move forward, we're moving forward in a way that's not exacerbating those past harms. So next slide, the Rose Quarter Project is a significant project for our state, really addressing key transportation needs with this being one of the top bottlenecks within our state, and also a significant opportunity to catalyze and support community development in the local albina area. So there's kind of four key areas of the project, including I-5 mainline improvements, new highway covers that will span over I-5 to create new community connections in space, new community connections over I-5, particularly in the form of a new bicycle and pedestrian bridge, as well as local street improvements to modernize the multimodal network in the interchange area. So next slide, knowing that the I-5 mainline improvements and design is of particular interest to this board relative to its proximity of Harriet Tubman Middle School, I just want to specifically share what's planned on the I-5 mainline. So the I-5 mainline improvements include the addition of one new auxiliary lane in each direction on I-5 between 84 and 405, as well as a full inside and outside safety shoulders. So the map on the left side of your screen shows where these improvements would be added. And the diagram on the right hand of your screen kind of shares the existing conditions versus the proposed conditions. So you can see the existing through lanes are in dark blue that remain in both existing and proposed condition. The existing auxiliary lanes are shown in light blue. And then what's proposed as part of the project is what's shown in orange. So in the southbound direction, you can see the new auxiliary lane being extended from Greeley and I-405 to the Morrison Bridge exit. And then the northbound direction, a new auxiliary lane added connecting I-84 to the south and then I-405 and Greeley to the north. So this again is design consists, is consistent with what's been approved in prior planning documents and House Bill 2017, the environmental document that was approved by Federal Highway Administration in 2020, what we costed in our 2020 Cost to Complete Report, and then just continues to be the basis for our design plans as we move forward. So next slide is just sort of a different way to illustrate and demonstrate the different elements of the project. So again, with the mainline improvements, I should know I-5, there's a lot happening on top of I-5. So the pink shows the location of the highway cover area. And we have a lot of work to do with the community to define what those new community spaces will be on top. New crossings, I mentioned the Clackamas Bicycle and Pedestrian Crossing, that's shown in purple kind of at the bottom of the map, as well as a new roadway connection across I-5 at Hancock Street. And then you can see sort of the scope and the area of the multimodal local street improvements in green.
Megan, could you tell us where on this map Tubman is?
Sure. So in, yeah, on this map, Harriet Tubman Middle School would just be to the north and actually basically right, it is just off the map here. But you see the blue box that says Hancock Dixon Crossing, that would sort of be about where Tubman is located. So to the north of the highway cover area. Yeah. All right. Next slide. So again, this, the Rose Quarter Project addresses key transportation needs, and again, is a significant opportunity to support and catalyze development in the local albina area and achieve benefits for the communities that we serve. So we're expecting to see an improvement in our traffic conditions, up to 50% reduction in crashes, saving drivers nearly 2.5 million hours of delay each year. So improving that traffic flow for our traveling public and freight, as well as providing new space for emergency responders and buses to move through traffic more quickly via the new shoulders. The new community connections also, you know, in the form of the highway covers with the new space that's created, help support safer streets, work to knit the albina community back together, and again, serve as that catalyst for future redevelopment. The project is also about creating jobs and opening up opportunities for our disadvantaged business enterprise or DDE community. We know that over $100 million will be going into the pockets of our DDE community through the opportunities with this. And so we're partnered with a contracting team, Hamilton-Sentt Joint Venture, in association with Raymore Construction, and with a key focus on breaking down those barriers that prevent DBEs from typically bidding on ODOT projects, involving DBEs early with technical assistance, and then helping to build a career pipeline for future construction workers that not only supports intergenerational wealth now, but into the future. So that's kind of a baseline of what the project is. I want to jump to our partnership and community engagement as the next slide. And again, I'm joined with Erica Warren, who is one of our strategic advisors on the project, and also our amazing facilitator of the Historic Albina Advisory Board. What you see here on the screen is sort of the how we're doing the work and who's involved. So in terms of the project governance, we have a number of different committees and really elevating the community voice as we're making decisions on the project. So you can see all of those different spaces there. I also highlighted sort of at all levels where Portland Public School, either board leadership or technical staff are embedded within our process as well. But with that, I will pause. And Erica, I will turn it over to you to share a little bit more about our project values and our community work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Megan. Thank you to all of you on the board serving our families and our children. Appreciate your time. It is an honor being a daughter of the albida community to serve in this capacity. My partner and I, Dr. Stephen Holt, we make up tri-excellence and we are at the table to help center the voices of those communities that generally have been disenfranchised and left out of these conversations. We understand that restorative justice is a big umbrella, but we are hoping that outcomes of this project would acknowledge the past harms and give us an opportunity to utilize this development to bring racial, social equity into the historic albina community. The community input and transparent decision-making is very key in this process. We are doing our best to engage several areas of community in these conversations. Dr. Holt facilitates the Executive Steering Committee, which encompasses some of our elected officials, other community leaders. I have the privilege of facilitating the Historic Albina Advisory Board, which is comprised of all members, leaders, activists, those who have been given their lives and their time to serve the historic African-American community here in Portland. And then Johnelle Bell facilitates a group that is helping to hold accountable, the CMGC, into those disadvantaged business enterprise goals that Megan referred to earlier. So we're taking a strategic step to make sure that the community is involved and that they understand and are listening consistently through the process. Then in mobility focused, we're excited that we're being able to focus in on multimodal transportation, that we are utilizing this development to create safer transportation, and not just reducing crashes, but it's safer for all who are traveling, pedestrians, bicyclists, all modes of transportation. And then a great concern, I'm sure for your team, as it is for the historic African-American community, is the climate action, improved public health, the additions of talking about air quality, as well as all of the other things that go into public health, our mental health, about safety, how people fit into the community, areas that they feel may be distraught about in relationship to gentrification, but how we can pull the communities back together to begin talking about how they benefit all of the communities collaboratively. Megan, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Erica. I'm going to now get into some of the details around the environmental review process, and then again, those design and construction elements. So touching quickly on the environmental process, this just shows a timeline, sort of where we've been and how we got to where we are today. So the environmental review phase did kick off back in 2017. A couple key milestones, just to keep track of here, are the environmental assessment that was published for a 45-day public comment period back in February of 2018, and really in response to stakeholder concerns, including those of Portland Public Schools, around air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and noise. The Oregon Transportation Commission directed ODOT to conduct an environmental peer review associated with the project's environmental assessment and those topic areas. And so the peer review was conducted in 2020 and informed the publication of the finding of no significant impact and revised environmental assessment in November of 2020. And that is the document that completes the environmental process. In terms of some of the key findings, go to the next slide, we did use a scientific approach guided by federal and state standards in the environmental assessment, and found that air quality and greenhouse gas emissions do improve with the project, meaning that the air will be better with the project built, and that noise will be mitigated by a proposed sound wall or noise wall, specifically with a noise wall proposed at Harriet Tubman Middle School. So we'll get into the details of where that wall will be located. Next slide, in terms of the environmental review panel that looked at those findings in our methodology, I just wanted to share the names, titles, and really areas of expertise of each of these experts. Quite, quite an impressive group and definitely humbled to have them be part of our process and have them take a look at our work. But we did hire Grace Kroniken, she's shown kind of on the bottom right-hand corner, to lead and facilitate and select this panel. And so as you can see, we have experts in air quality, noise, and sustainability, ranging from public sector to private sector with perspectives brought from across the nation. And so we were again directed by the Oregon Transportation Commission to bring this panel together and are really thankful for the recommendations that they have provided for us as we move forward in our design. So I'll hit on a couple of those over the next two slides here. But the next slide is really around the noise findings. So in regards to their findings around the environmental assessment or the EA, it found that the noise analysis did comply with the kind of appropriate methodology and findings. But the peer review did provide some additional recommendations, just really around how the information could have been presented. We could have done a better job making that not so technical and more clear. And then also recommending that we take a deeper dive into some of the construction noise elements. And they provided some different recommendations for us to consider, including some noise, noise barriers or different mitigation during construction. On the next slide, for air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, our evaluation, again, the peer review did find that those evaluations were done correctly and the conclusions were accurate. And even with greenhouse gas evaluation, that we went above and beyond kind of the standard federal requirements for the National Environmental Policy Act. Again, we could have done a better job in communicating those findings. But the peer review again did provide some suggested mitigation and betterments that could be applied. So we are actively working on those, as well as in coordination with Portland Public School staff and technical team in our coordination. So last piece is on design and construction. We can jump to, yeah, the first slide there. So we are currently at the 20% design level. So we're early. We have 80% to go. I wanted to share that one of our guiding principles as we're designing this project is to minimize impacts to non-ODOT property, really as best that we can to ensure, while also ensuring that we're delivering on the directives of the project. So this map here kind of gets into the Harriet Tubman Middle School specifics. So this shows the current right-of-way needs based on our 20% design to accommodate the new auxiliary lane, the safety shoulders, and the planned improvements at the school site, which include also the retaining wall at the base of the slope that is on the west side of Harriet Tubman Middle School, and a proposed sound wall in that same location. So what you see on this map is that the pink shaded triangle area shows the area of Portland Public Schools' property that would be need, would be needed to be acquired under the current project design. So the width of this area varies based kind of on the skewed property lines in that location. And then the purple shaded rectangle that's on top of that pink triangle shows the area of land that's assumed to be needed for a permanent easement. So no project features would be located in that area, but an easement agreement would be needed just for ongoing maintenance and operations activities along the backside of the proposed noise wall in that location. So again, most of the acquisition area that's again shown in pink is in the slope and the vegetated area between the school and the highway. But I do want to note that a portion of this also includes the paved area that's immediately west of the school building. I'll just note that like in terms of order of magnitude of impact, the paved area that would be effective is, you know, six feet or less, depending on where you are along that, that right-of-way line. And there would still be about 20 feet of space along the paved area between the school building and then the back of the noise wall that's proposed in that location. So again, these are preliminary assumptions based on 20% design. We have a lot of work to do. And we're going to continue to coordinate with Portland Public Schools at all levels, but primarily technical staff on these assumptions, particularly for the permanent easement. And we know that there's ongoing needs to coordinate specifically around the school's need for that roadway and considerations on fire, fire access, maintenance access, as well as deliveries. So on the next slide, this really, thank you for allowing me to share some technical drawings here, but just wanted to share, based on a conversation that we had with Portland Public School staff back in October of 2020 work session, staff did request that the design team investigate if the noise wall along this location might be able to be moved closer to the highway and still achieve the same benefits of reducing noise levels. So our design team did run that analysis and did find that the noise wall can be moved closer to the highway, so as not to take up as much space in, in the pave, in the paved area just west of the school. And so we are currently looking as the design moving forward to place the noise wall on top of the retaining wall that would be as part of the highway improvements just west of the school. So I will jump to the next slide on kind of the methodology and approach here. Again, we have a construction, a goal in our construction sort of code of conduct is no impact to the school building. All of our design and construction assumptions do not impact the school building. And then we're assuming that we also want to make sure that the school building foundation will remain in good condition and minimizing ground settlement and vibrations during construction as well. So the new retaining wall that would be constructed in this area, one of the sort of considerations and methodologies is that it will be built to meet current design codes, both for seismic and non-seismic events, to help with the slope stability in that area, and that any construction access needs and duration, again, would be in part dependent on what the wall design would be. And working again with Portland Public Schools and some of the data collection that we've been doing around geotech information to inform what refinements we might be able to make to reduce the construction duration in this area. And speaking of construction duration, we're also have, are carrying forward an assumption, and as required, as mitigation in the environmental document, that construction would occur during the summers when school is not in session. I do want to flag that we expect right now that construction would take more than one summer window. So we'll have continued coordination again with, with you and your staff as we learn more about the construction.
Can I interrupt just for one sec?
Yes, please.
When you say construction would be limited to summer months, are you talking about construction of the wall or construction of the, of the highway itself?
Great question. Thank you for that. It is construction within the vicinity of Harriet Tubman Middle School. So that would include the wall, the retaining wall, the noise wall, as well as the highway improvements in that area, really to, to limit the impact of construction or disruption to the students during the school year.
When you say it would be more than one summer, are we talking two summers or six summers?
I think we're, we're more in the two summer window, definitely not six, but we need to do some more work to kind of hone that in. But order of magnitude, about, about two at this point, but we know it's more than one.
Have you taken into account that we have summer programs at a number of our schools?
We, yes, we're in active coordination with your Portland Public School staff to better understand what those are and how we can best coordinate as we continue to develop out the construction plans. All right. Few more slides, and then I'm happy to take questions as we go and when I'm, when I'm done here. So in terms of the noise findings and kind of again, the approach here, just want to highlight that the, that the noise wall that would be constructed would reduce the noise levels interior within the school to about a 45 decibel range. Right now, the, it's modeled to be about a 50 decibel range. So the noise levels would be better than they are today. And then again, I mentioned that construction activities near the school would be limited to those summer months to avoid disruptions. And then during construction, ODOT will be requiring the construction contractor to minimize short-term noise impacts, both through the duration and timing of work and the type of equipment used. So again, we're pulling from a lot of the recommendations from that environmental peer review process to address those, those, those short-term impacts. And then on the next slide, you know, the project as it relates to air quality findings and approach here, we know, we, we remain committed to working with Portland Public Schools to implement design elements that can enhance air quality at Harriet Tubman Middle School. We do know that again, with building the project, the air does improve. But during construction, we want to make sure that we're also taking actions to minimize short-term air quality impacts, such including, you know, monitoring to around controlling dust and exhaust emissions, and requiring construction contractors to limit idle time of trucks, the type of equipment that they are using in terms of emissions as well. and requiring construction contractors to limit idle time of trucks, the type of equipment that they are using in terms of emissions as well. So the last part of my presentation. Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So just on this last side, you said that ODOT is committed to enhancing the air quality. How come ODOT, when I proposed language for the project that said that one of the values would be the air quality in the grounds of Harriet Tubman Middle School and adjacent Willis Albina Park is at a level that medical and public health professionals find it safe for children and youth? How come ODOT opposed that language and said substituted something that does does not have healthy air quality as sort of a foundational element?
Great question. And I I know that those conversations have taken place at the Executive Steering Committee. The values statement does include in there that we will improve public health at Harriet Tubman Middle School. And so we'll want to kind of continue to work with you on understanding what that means and sort of what metrics would make sense to to use. One thing that we're doing.
The metric, though, that was proposed was a standard that's healthy for youth and children. And so the substitution of the other language is not based on a health standard. It's a incremental better.
Got it. Yeah, I think what what you are asking for is definitely part of our consideration for the performance metrics. So the value statement is really around improving public health at Harriet Tubman Middle School. We're now drilling down kind of one level deeper with the performance measures, which will be coming back to the Executive Steering Committee to to start to measure like what what are those standards or metrics that would make sense as an executive steering committee to adopt as we measure the air quality moving forward?
Megan, why don't you go ahead and finish up the last couple of slides and then we'll we'll open it up for.
Sounds good. All right. Last piece here is really just around an update for a design option that we are considering that would actually shift the highway, proposed highway improvements away from Harriet Tubman Middle School in this location. So our project team is evaluating a design option that shifts the northern portion of the highway alignment to the west. Again, an option that would not move I-5 any closer to the school site. And so what I'm showing you here is really the current design running Harriet Tubman Middle School. So just kind of as a baseline understanding. So the new auxiliary lane on northbound I-5 is shown here as well as the full outside safety shoulders that would extend closer to the school by about 26 feet. And so with this, the existing retaining wall, as I've mentioned, would be rebuilt to provide enhanced stabilization of that slope between the school and I-5. You can also see a rendering of the proposed noise wall in that location as well. On the next slide, kind of highlighting the design option here. So this design option really is being explored to minimize technical and construction concerns, particularly around the retaining wall in that location. And exploring this design option to the west also would help respond to the concerns that we hear from the community and Portland Public Schools around the proximity of the project to Harriet Tubman Middle School. So we're in the early stages of this evaluation and are reaching out to Portland Public Schools on this and working with your technical team in more detail. We also know that there would, with a shift to the west, there would be an impact likely to a private property to the west, Shinchin Foods. So we are in active communication to understand how the design option might affect this property as well. So we're going to continue to share the design option information with our partners, with the community, and including plans to engage Harriet Tubman Middle School community and the Shinchin employees as we gather more information and feedback on the design options. So we'll be looking at this really now through mid-July and we'll be carrying this decision forward with our Executive Steering Committee as we learn more. In terms of next steps, just kind of want to frame again where we are and where we're going with key milestones as one of the next slides here. So again, we're at the 20% design milestone. Some key near-term deliverables and decisions that will be made are around the independent highway cover assessment, which is helping us to define what the realm of possibilities are around the highway cover uses to help achieve a community vision. The southbound realignment design option decision that I just noted to help us get to a 30% design later this year in anticipation of construction starting in 2023. Thank you for allowing me to share a lot of information and I look forward to answering more of your questions.
Great. Thank you, Megan, and thank you to the entire team. Appreciate the presentation. So we're going to open it up and and just sort of round robin questions as we go through. I'm just gonna, I'm going to kick it off with with a little bit of a of a higher level question. And because I think we might get into some some details as we go through this. But you know, I really appreciate early on in in your presentation, you talked about acknowledging ODOT's role, right? Historical role in in displacement and the impact that's had. And you said one of the sort of principles that you operate under for this project and others is to not make things worse. One of the things government generally has been grappling with more and more in recent years is this idea of how do we, you know, how do we do restorative justice? How do we look back? And and, you know, in my day job, I work for Metro and and, you know, Metro has, you know, had a lot of these conversations, right, around what is the harm that that urban planning has has had, you know, transportation planning, et cetera, on, you know, on communities of color in particularly, in particular. So I think that's an important principle, but one of the things that really came out of the Reimagine Oregon work of this last year is is taking that conversation to a new level. Right? So it's not just sort of recognizing this historical wrongs, but really looking at like, you know, what are the reparations that need to happen, right? What is the, what is the fix for it to go back and say, we did something wrong? It's great that we're finally acknowledging it decades too late, but what are we actually, what are we actually doing to to fix it? And so I my question is, you know, at the high level, what is ODOT doing? In that, you know, regards, but you know, when we talk about this project and you talk about all the issues you're dealing with around Harriet Tubman, it sort of makes me wonder if it wouldn't both be helpful for the project and also a form of restorative justice and reparations to actually move Harriet Tubman Middle School to to a different location. You know, it opens up some some land that might be used for something else and really right some of those historical wrongs. I know when this issues come up, I'm not the first one to raise it, you know, sometimes I hear, oh, well, that's, you know, ODOT's not going to have money for that. But I guess my question is that something that as an agency you're you're considering or would consider? And 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 sort of having that larger question about about reparations for historical wrongs?
Yeah, so I can take that one. And Brendan, I'll answer it at the project level and Brendan perhaps can step in for more of an agency level. In terms of your question about, you know, relocating Harriet Tubman Middle School, you know, I think that we know that ODOT and the project cannot relocate Harriet Tubman Middle School. It's really around, you know, looking at what the impact is, what the what the relative impact of the project is to the school site. And what our analysis shows is that there is not a significant impact. That said, we want to make sure that we are partnering to make the right investments to again, ensure in the spirit of our values and restorative justice and climate action, public health, mobility, that we are making investments that can help improve the area. We're working directly with the community and elevating voices of the African-American community. You heard Erica talk about specifically the Historic Albina Advisory Board. We're looking to them to help inform what does restorative justice mean? What does restorative justice look like in in helping us and helping us move forward in those investments that can be made that truly have an impact on the community? So that's what we're doing as a project. Brendan, I'll turn it to you kind of for the for for the broader question around agency.
And actually, just on a technical basis, when you say, sorry, really quickly, when you say ODOT can't do it, is that a legislative restriction that doesn't allow you to 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 include costs like that in a project such as this?
Brendan, do you want to take that one from an ODOT perspective? I could, from from a project level, the project does not have the funding available to be used for the relocation of the school, really, as those funds are kind of, it's related to the impacts that the project would have. So from a project perspective, no, the funding would not be able to be used to relocate Harriet Tubman Middle School.
Yeah, I'll jump in now, Chair Scott. I think that, you know, we've had a lot of robust discussions at the at the Executive Steering Committee level, which Director Brim Edwards attends on behalf of PPS, which we're appreciative. And I know Vice Chair Simpson from the Oregon Transportation Commission involved in a lot of, a lot of discussions with community partners on on how we right historic wrongs through the agency. You're right, we've owned it. I know you and I spent a lot of time working for the the city of Portland where we had to own it too. And I know others governmental entities had to do it too, but how do we show up? And for us to do it, I'd encourage everyone to go back and watch the Oregon Transportation Commission meeting this morning, where we're really trying to address how we do that around the tolling program. We're going to be instituting a tolling program that has never been done before in the United States that has this this piece around climate, but how do we get that equity piece right? And basically, the one thing that we do know is that government should not come up with that answer. We had the Equity Mobility Advisory Committee before us today to talk about how they're implementing a trauma-informed perspective as it relates to communities of color and those that have been disproportionately impacted by the transportation system. We're starting to get that within our DNA, Chair Scott, and and we're we're applying that to now everything that we do. Obviously, I want to promote that and encourage people to look that we're doing business differently as an agency. That's why I be, I came to be a part of it from from past work that I've done. So pretty proud of where we're heading. And again, Ms. Warren's work with the Historic Albina Advisory Committee is like nothing that I've ever seen. And I've been in government for 23 years about how we're elevating those voices. And the investments we make are going to be reflected by those voices. So that's what we're doing as an agency. That's how that's relating back into this project. And again, we're kind of abandoning a lot of those traditional processes we do for for community advisory boards and other things to make sure that we are elevating that voice, especially the voice of the black community in Albina.
So I just have to jump in because I think that Chair Scott's question didn't get answered because a statement that this doesn't have a significant impact on Harriet Tubman Middle School, it it just, it it doesn't ring true because if the question was about the historic work that ODOT did, which had a huge impact on Harriet Tubman Middle School. So to have a new project in which there'll be further impact and to ignore, and I think what Director's Chair Scott was trying to get at was that sort of the original placing of the freeway next to Harriet Tubman had a really, really negative impact on the air quality and the students there. And to go for ODOT to not just look at the current project and we're going to make it slightly better, but look at the original. And so I I'm, I am curious about the the thinking. And maybe this is for you, Brendan, since it's sort of a larger, not not the specific project, because if, you know, if we we focus just on the project, then you don't get to the bigger thing. But the, you know, what happened with the state, and I know, you know, PPS is looking at ways in which it can address things that we've done in our history and the the Port of Portland is doing the same thing. So I'm wondering about Director Chair Scott's question about the original placement and, you know, the running over the community that happened at that point, which has resulted in decades of environmental hazards, you know, at that school community.
No, that that's right. And, you know, I think we we own that. And we've been upfront and blunt about that message. Now, what we don't want to do, and again, Director Brim Edwards, I'm just going to be really clear about this, is get out in front of the community. That's voice has not been heard. So we are doing that now. We're going through the process. And obviously, we we don't want to make the same mistake that governments have, that privileged people have in the past, which is getting it out in front of the community before we're hearing their voice.
I appreciate that, Brendan. And I'd like to just jump in again. I said, I I'm proud of this work because I'm a daughter of this community. My parents met at Elliott, which is now Harriet Tubman Middle School. My grandparents' home was taken in eminent domain. So this is a direct impact to my family and a number of the other board members who sit on the Historic Albina Advisory Board. Many of their parents' homes were taken. Many of them went to Elliott and walked there and lived in those neighborhoods. And they are finding ways to have conversations. We we realize we can't dig up the freeway and give everybody their homes back. But there are opportunities that can help us build generational wealth in line. So you have a group of invested community leaders who lived, walked, and breathed Harriet Tubman, again, which was Elliott at the time, who are conscious and who are working alongside with you. We we care about our kids there at Harriet Tubman Middle School. And I would say, give the community an opportunity to to voice their concerns and what they feel is restorative in regards to their neighborhood and their homes. So I appreciate the work you're doing. I hope that you would hear that we are forwarding the conversation and we are asking those who have been historically and directly impacted, what what their thoughts are in regards to it. And and I'm positive there will be an opportunity for collaborative outcomes.
Thanks, Ms. Warren. Let me go ahead and just open it up then to board members. I see Scott, you are unmuted. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, please. One thing I want to note, I'm hearing, gosh, it's a new day and how we relate to the community. And yet, we sense, you know, letters of concern to you that you have never responded to directly. So it's it's hard for me to hear about this new way of doing business. Secondly, it's hard for me to hear that you don't have the money when you're coming up with, what, three or 400 more million than you originally planned with, plan to spend? I don't know what the current budget estimate is. So that's also a little hard for me to understand. Third, I want to, you know, one of the specific things we pointed out was that when you build walls and freeway caps, which look to be pretty minimal right now, you affect wind patterns and airflow patterns in unpredictable ways. So there is no way to tell whether, when you do some new construction like that, it conceivably could funnel even more particulate matter into the Tubman community. I'm not going to get into the argument about whether this project is going to make air quality better. I'll just say, most people think that's ludicrous. You've got your model. Don't want to, don't want to argue about that here. But that's, that that is a big bone of contention that you continue to push that when it's, it's not very believable, frankly. And as critics have pointed out, has never happened with any freeway project before in this nation. So, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of things. I I can't imagine crossing those freeway lids or spending any time in those freeway lids when you're basically sitting on a freeway exposed to really, really poor air quality from all the traffic going below. So I've just laid out a number of concerns. You have done nothing to allay those concerns in a couple of years now, and I'll stop there.
I'm I'm happy to address those, Director Scott, but we'll take your lead on how to best proceed.
No, please go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. So I just wanted to touch base. I kind of heard four things around, you know, addressing Portland Public Schools concerns per the letters that have been written, question around budget and cost and funding, question around the construction of noise walls and how that might affect wind patterns and air quality concerns. And then concerns around the air quality findings. So I'll kind of hit them in that order. In terms of kind of Portland Public Schools and concerns that have been voiced, we do take those really seriously and have been addressing them. I think in the slide that we showed in terms of project governance structure, we're committed to the prior sort of we're committed to the prior sort of partnerships and involvement that we've had with Portland Public Schools at all level and making sure that Portland Public Schools continues to be part of our project at all levels. So, I want to thank Board Member Julia Brim Edwards for being on the Executive Steering Committee. Courtney Westling, your Government Relations Director, who's part of the Project Management Group. And then a number of Portland Public Schools' technical staff that are helping us to actively work through a lot of those concerns that were addressed early on and continue to be framed up through our process. So, we are actively working.
Sorry, but you have never responded to the school board.
And I should note-
In any kind of direct way?
When I proposed language based on air quality that's healthy for our students, it was voted down in the executive committee. So, yes, I haven't been there, but the concerns of PPS have not been incorporated into the value statements of the project. So, just for the record, even though I've been there, it was substituted by a much weaker standard that ODOT proposed.
Yes, and we want to make sure that we continue to partner with you moving forward, particularly in light of the performance metrics that we'll be putting together for those measurements. I also want to address the kind of the budget and cost component. So, the cost estimate right now is the $715 to $795 million. That is for the improvements that are articulated early in the presentation around the mainline improvements, the highway covers, the new community connections, and the local multimodal street improvements. And so, those dollars have sort of been federally approved for use for those particular features. And so, that is, that is the funding that we have available for those features. And then in terms of the construction piece, the one thing that we did learn from our environmental peer review, as well as our team's kind of continued exploration of national practices, is looking at noise walls. And they actually have been found that they can have a beneficial impact to air quality by capturing air particulates to further improve air quality in the area. So, that's something that we're looking into more. It's kind of a, it's a new element of this, of this part of the design and construction world. But we're leaning into it and want to understand how we can build that in a way that not only helps abate sound, but the pollutant emissions as well. And in terms of the air quality findings, you know, we want to make sure that we were getting our evaluation right, which is exactly why we had the Environmental Peer Review and Independent Panel join us, as well as participation from Portland Public Schools to share concerns directly to the panel. And the findings were that our methodology, our evaluation, and then the findings were appropriate and accurate for the project. So, we do rely on that kind of scientific panel of national experts as we move forward.
Right, but that was based on a reduction in traffic assumption, correct?
It was, it was based on the modeling that was provided to us from the regional demand model. It's mandated that any project that's happening in the Portland metro region uses the metro travel demand model. And so, those were our inputs as we modeled the project moving forward, applied that to a city-level model, and then used the outputs from that model to inform the air quality evaluation.
So, go ahead, Em.
So, I just know Director Moore's had her hand up for a little while. So, I was gonna, I was gonna switch over to her. Rita?
I'm going to pick up where Scott just left off. So, my understanding of the peer review, the environmental peer review process, was that they were not asked to analyze in any way the projections for traffic. And they were only asked to, I'm not an engineer, so I'm going to use these terms the way I understand it. So, they were asked to accept the premise that there would be decreased traffic and then apply that to projections about potential decreases or improvements in air quality. But they were never asked to address the essential question, the fundamental question of whether any of these projects, any piece of this project would, would in fact result in decreased volume of traffic. Is that correct?
Yeah, the fact that the peer review, Director Moore, did not look at the traffic analysis is correct. But I do want to state something for the record, that our findings aren't showing a decrease in traffic. As part of this, we do know that we are improving the traffic flow, so reducing the stop-and-go traffic, the idling of traffic and trucks that have, in those conditions, have the most polluting emissions in the area. So, with the new auxiliary lane and the safety shoulders, that improved traffic flow is part of the modeling considerations and the outputs and then inputs into the air quality modeling as well.
But it's also based on certain assumptions that there will be improved traffic flow. And can, and at my understanding is that your analysis did not even consider the problem of a potential induced demand. So, can I ask if you can point me in the direction of any example in the United States that a freeway widening of this type has five, 10 years out actually produced decreased congestion?
There, Brendan, I see that you've come off mute. I'm happy to answer that. But if you wanted to step in, I wanted to run that opportunity for you as well.
I'll, I'll, I'll add.
Okay, thank you. Director Moore, that's a really good question. We do, just even within the Portland metro area, do keep records of kind of before and after data in areas where we've implemented other auxiliary lanes. I'll point to one example on I-84 that connects Halsey to I-205. That auxiliary lane was built several years ago. And our before data and after data is showing that there is an improvement in traffic flow with the addition of that auxiliary lane. More recently, there's also an auxiliary lane that was added to I-5 southbound near Boone's Ferry, so kind of in the Tuallaton vicinity. And we have also seen an improvement of traffic flow and a significant reduction in crashes as well in those locations where the auxiliary lanes have been added. So, similar context and type of improvement in those two locations that are showing that kind of real-life before and after data.
And how far out are we from those projects?
I don't have that at the tip of my fingers, but I, it's been several years for the I-84 improvement. And then, I believe, just maybe coming on two years for the I-5 southbound. But I can follow up with you to get that specifically. And I'll also provide the data on those in terms of the before and after.
Okay, I would appreciate that because everything I have read, and I claim no expertise in this, but everything I have read seems to point in the direction of highway expansion not producing longstanding improvements in, in reducing congestion. Can I turn to some specific Harriet Tubman questions? So, Director Bailey mentioned that the walls that are being proposed could have some negative impact on air quality. And I'd like to know if, if ODOT, in looking at the specific impacts on Tubman, have used any of the information that was produced in 2018 by external consultants that we used prior to reopening Harriet Tubman? They did a great deal of work on mitigation strategies for air pollution. And one of the findings, as I recall, was that one potential strategy, building a wall, would more than likely actually decrease air quality, would increase the amount of particulate matter. So, have, in designing your plans, have you considered any of that research around the noise walls? Or you're finding that the construction around that area, especially the walls, would not have a negative impact on the stability of the soil or the integrity of the foundation of Tubman?
Yeah, Director Moore, those are really good questions. And I know that the technical staff has shared with us the great work that Portland Public Schools did specific to the Harriet Tubman site. So, we definitely want to partner and continue to learn from your team on that expertise and betterments that we can look to incorporate as part of the project. I can't speak specifically to the findings around the wall, but I do know that the wall was discussed there, and that is part of our team's conversation. And then, as it relates to the slope stability with the reconstruction of the retaining wall as part of the project, we, we do see that as building that wall up to current seismic standards that would have an improvement on the slope stability in that area.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I would like to know whether and how you have used the information that PPS accumulated. There was a great deal of time, energy, and expense that went into getting that information. And I think it directly addresses one of your assumptions in the slide on wall methodology. You say that it assumes existing building foundation is in good condition. And based on my understanding of what was uncovered in 2018, 2019, no, 2018, I, I would want some reassurance that that assumption is actually warranted.
Thank you, Director Moore. And I, we probably should have done a better job on that slide. The intent there is to assume that the foundations remain in good condition in that location. But to your point, we also will look at the study from PPS to make sure that that's incorporated into our, into our review.
Yeah, because those studies showed that there was substandard hill underneath Tubman and a great deal of instability in the hillside. So, I'm, I'm wondering if the, your assertion about increased seismic protection takes those facts into account. We don't even know what the foundation of Tubman looks like. It appears just to be kind of sitting on dirt as opposed to have any real foundation, as one would understand it.
Yeah, Director Bailey, you're asking a really good question. And we did just recently partner with Portland Public Schools, and we did some subsurface geotechnical investigation in that area to really understand what are the soil conditions there. So, in addition to the study and the on-the-ground research and data collection that we're doing, that will all inform our design.
So, I know Director Lowry has a question, and then I think Director Brim Edwards probably has another question or two. And then I want to wrap up. Director Moore, did you, was there anything else urgent? I sort of-
I also want to know if, if you have or intend to do some specific site monitoring of existing air quality. And are you factoring that into your projections about the impact of this project on Harriet Tubman?
Director Moore, I'll have to follow up with you on that. That's one of the recommendations that's coming out of the Environmental Peer Review, is around the monitoring. So, we'll have to follow up with you on sort of what our, what our team's approach and recommendations. And again, learning from Portland Public Schools, how we can best do that moving forward.
All right, I think I get to be next. So, the design shift timeline that you presented of considering, you know, shifting the freeway away from Tubman, when will you sort of know if that is the direction that you'll be taking the project?
Great question. That would be, we're exploring that really in the upcoming months. And so, that decision would take place in July of this year.
And then, is there any consideration of putting a cap on that part of the freeway to help further mitigate the pollution there in the Tubman vicinity?
So, we currently have an independent highway cover assessment process underway for which, you know, Portland Public Schools is with us in that and really leaning on the community vision and the community input to that independent process to help define kind of the possibilities around the highway covers.
And I, you know, I agree with the sort of the sentiment that Dr. Scott, I'm promoting you, Andrew. Director Scott shared at the beginning of this meeting of, you know, I think Tubman is a historic location. I think as Ms. Warren shared, there's lots of family connections to that location and that site. And I think it's important to the community. I also know that the situation as it is now is very difficult. And I think that there is something in the idea of moving Tubman to perhaps to the Jefferson property or to another site to create a really excellent school as we, as a community, look at what does it mean to sort of reunify Albina? And I, I think this is a moment when it feels like we have the chance to really do some innovative new things to reset some of the historic wrongs that have been done to especially the Black community in Portland. And so, I would really advocate for thinking about, how do we not just mitigate the effects on Tubman? But how do we really say, this injustices were done? And what are creative solutions to really move forward rather than just make it less awful? Because I think right now, we can agree that the air quality at Tubman is bad. The fact that students can't be outside, all of those pieces. And I think the work you're doing is trying to make it less bad, but I would like to make it a lot less bad than, than where we are right now. So, would really plead for ODOT to get creative about what this might look like as we especially look at the Tubman property.
Director, whoops, sorry.
Go ahead, Brendan.
I was going to say, Director Lowry, that's spot on. And we need to do it as a community. And we're very thankful that you're having these hard conversations with us and being at the table. We need to bring more partners to the table and really kind of coalesce to create, to create that synergy we need to create what you just articulated. So, we're here with open arms too, and really want to have other partners at the table so we can really, as you stated, better than I can, kind of reconnect and reimagine this community to kind of right some of the historic wrongs. So, hopefully, you can join us in asking those entities to join us of all the potential that's available there. So, I really appreciate that comment.
So, just one final thing. It came out a few months ago, you floated a plan to carve away even more from the Tubman property than the initial plan that went through the EA. And it turned out, you'd had that plan on the back burner for several years and never shared it with us. How are we supposed to trust when those kind of things keep happening? Again, not in the past, but in the current. And you don't have to answer that, but that's where we are right now.
Yeah, Director Bailey, it's going to be through our actions moving forward.
Director Brim Edwards, did you have additional questions?
I did. So, I, and I've got to make one observation first. Just the Environmental Peer Review panel, I think it's important to note that ODOT admitted that the panel was selected and convened by the former head of ODOT and not somebody that, and we weren't consulted on the question that was asked. And I believe they had a very narrow framework versus what is the health standard for students who are outside on the Harriet Tubman Middle School grounds. So, I just want to note that, that that was handpicked by, not, not by us or the community, but by an individual who is closely aligned with ODOT. I want to recognize and affirm the statement that, I think that PPS is supportive of the work that Ms. Warren pointed to, that ODOT is including community members who have been historically impacted by the I-5, by I-5. And I think that's the right thing for ODOT to do. And I think that's the right thing for ODOT to do. And and I really, it's important, I view this as an conversation because um and there's a school community that has been impacted by by I-5 and that will continue to be impacted. Um, and the standard that is being set is not a standard that's based on the health of our students, but on um on the um sort of an arbitrary, is it slightly better? Um, is it going from horrible to less worse or less horrible? So my my question is, given that there's going to be a continuing impact, is ODOT open to setting this up in a way that a um there there could be a um achieving two really important community values. One, the Black economic empowerment um and the um generational wealth that will come out of this project and the health of the community, including the school community. And I I feel like to date, there seems to be a you can't a a perception from ODOT um or the way this is being structured is isn't either or. And it would be great if ODOT was embracing a process in which um it wasn't a choice between the two, but that we could have both. And so I'm interested in hearing ways in which um the ODOT team thinks that we could have an and solution. And again, not a slight, it's slightly better, because I don't think that's from a health standpoint or an environmental standpoint, um, but a one that's a standard that we'd all want for our students and that also embraces the uh potential of uh Black economic empowerment through this project.
And Director Brim Edwards, um, we definitely want to uh make sure that we're moving forward with an and both approach um to our work, um, not an either or um and having to um kind of make trade-offs there. The, you know, value around um public health uh remains and is is guiding our work. Um, so again, you have our commitment to continue to work um work with you uh and staff on those performance measures. And how do we, how do we measure that? What is the right approach? Um, and then, you know, in in the work um that Erica is doing with our albina, our Historic Albina Advisory Board, again, it's it's working directly with the community, elevating the community voices um and helping us understand A, what the barriers are, B, what the opportunities are, and how we can partner together um to address those in an and both way.
Um, so do we have Ms. Warren's um contact information? If she'd be up for it, I'd love to have a cup of coffee and um hear hear about ideas around um rebuilding wealth, which um I don't know if it's ever been done before.
I would agree, Director Bailey, and I'm sure um our um communications director can be helpful in connecting us. I would love to have the conversation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And Courtney probably has your contact information as well, so we'll. Thank you, appreciate you all coming today.
Director Scott?
Yes. Hello, Amy.
Director Constan. Um, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Director Lowry said and really invite ODOT, invite all of you to to think about how you might partner with us in a more expansive um vision for our children, because I agree with Director Lowry that it seems fairly clear that the the health and safety of our students at Harriet Tubman um is is not consistent with, really, in my opinion, any of these proposed improvements, whether it most likely whether the alignment moves to the West or not. And so we're about to embark on this process with our community, with the Harriet Tubman community on envisioning a Center for Black Student Excellence and some really significant investment in our historically Black schools in North Portland, which include Harriet Tubman. So, you know, I'd like to invite ODOT to be a partner in those conversations, including um considering whether a right-of-way acquisition here is what's best for the community. You're left then with a significant asset that also um makes it easier for you to do what you want to do. And we can, you know, move on to envision with the community what what everyone wants for the future of Harriet Tubman. And again, we haven't started those conversations, but I'd just like to invite ODOT to be part of a much broader, community-centered conversation about what we do there. So thank you, Director Lowry, for for bringing that up, and and thank you all for being here.
Great. Um, yeah, I will also add my thanks um to Brendan and and Megan and Erica. Really appreciate your time. There are obviously lots of questions, and there will be more uh questions going forward. So um I'm sure you're going to be hearing um more for us, but I from us, but I appreciate this um dialogue and conversation.
Um, Andrew, I I'm sorry, be before we close this out, um, since I may I may not get another chance to weigh in on this topic as a board member. Um, I I think it's in, I I would say um I I appreciate our emphasis on the school site, Harriet Tubman, and trying to find a solution for that. Um, but I also want to remind us that um PPS has also made a claim to um aspiring to be a leader in in combating climate change. So um I think we have a greater responsibility that um transcends a single school. And even if we can come up with a solution for Harriet Tubman Middle School, um, I think we also have a responsibility to use our position to question the the wisdom of this project in terms of whether it advances improvement in in greenhouse gas emissions or whether it's going to ultimately um exacerbate the the ongoing um trajectory of climate change. Um, so I I would just like PPS to keep the um the bigger existential question in mind.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moore.
Andrew.
I I heard a voice. Was that Parker? Parker, I think you're having some connection issues.
Um, yes, uh, yes. Hello?
Yes, we we can hear you better, thank you.
Okay, I I think there's a bit of a lag in addition to the the sketchy connection. I was wondering, because I've I've got a few um questions uh floating around in my mind, who I could um direct those to uh in in written form or sort of in a in an additional discussion. And then, in addition to that, I do have one um sort of more pressing question. Um, and that was specifically about um uh student students being in engaged, Harriet Tubman students, um, or I guess other albina, um, uh, the 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 community, but but especially um the youth. Um, I'm not sure who who would be the most appropriate to answer that specific question. But that uh just.
Great.
And this is.
Andrew, can I just respond to that briefly? Because um Parker, you should know that um Shanice is going to be setting up a process by which. Can you hear me, Parker? Anyway, I was going to say, Parker.
Yes, yes, I can.
Shanice is setting up a community engagement process um to directly engage with the school community around this.
Okay, that's that's wonderful to hear.
Great. And then, Parker, do you, I I was actually going to say, I I, to the extent there are additional questions, let's funnel those back um through Courtney, and and there may be other questions from board members as well that we didn't have time to get to today. So um we can send those along. And and just because we didn't do introductions at the beginning, Parker's one of our student representatives uh on this committee. So so thanks, thanks for chiming in. Um, I think we're going to move on. Yep.
Can I just thank you, thank you for having us? Um, we really appreciate you being here. We we know we need to be there for the difficult conversations. Uh, Director Moore, I'd love to connect with you offline. I don't know if you heard my preamble about our congestion pricing system that we're using uh and how we're going to be kind of dialing that in to um to kind of look at some of the impacts that that may happen around uh the possibilities of induced demand based on these improvements. So not going to go into it here, but love to connect with you offline on that, because we're really trying to uh talk to as many people as possible. Uh, members of the board, really appreciate your time um and and consideration and and all that you do uh for our communities and for our kids. So uh Chair Scott just wanted to to give that thanks to you, and we understand we have more hard questions to answer.
Great, no, I appreciate that. And I was going to encourage you, if you want to stick around, if you have time for the next um uh five or 10 minutes, we're just going to hear from a couple of people who signed up to testify about this particular topic. Um, so with that, Kara, I will turn to you. Um, and I think we have some public testimony, is that right?
Yes, uh, we have Joan Pettit or Pettit?
Pettit.
Pettit, all right.
And Joan, thank, yeah, thank you for being here, and we will have three minutes for uh your testimonies tonight.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Joan Pettit, P-E-T-I-T. My pronouns are she/her's. I'm a PPS parent, and I live in the Elliott neighborhood near Harriet Tubman Middle School. I'm the single mother of two Black children that I adopted, one of whom graduated from Tubman two years ago. When we moved to Portland 12 years ago, we moved to Historic Albina. So my kids would grow up in a positive, supportive, majority Black community. This community and schools like Boise Elliott Humboldt, Harriet Tubman, and Benson High School have been true gifts to my family. It was only a few years ago that I worked with other parents in inner North and Northeast Portland to reopen Tubman so kids like mine could have a dedicated middle school like almost every other neighborhood in Portland. My kids have benefited from excellent Black administrators and teachers of all races who have real racial and cultural competency, who don't see them as stereotypes, but as students there to learn. Sadly, that's not always been my kids' experience in Oregon. If my children have positive self-image and esteem, I attribute that to this community, to this Black community, to this neighborhood and these schools. It's amazing that this neighborhood has survived. The Oregon Highway Department devastated this community when it tore a hole through albina, a scar that pollutes the air, makes our community sick, and remains to this day. And now ODOT wants to double down on the harm to this community with an unnecessary freeway expansion. Even worse, they are calling this restorative justice, as if paying Black people to further destroy their communities, to hurt Black children, is some kind of reparations, is anything other than cynical exploitation. Is the health and well-being of my Black children irrelevant to ODOT? Are their lungs just collateral damage? Shame on ODOT for their cynical marketing, for rebranding, for their lies, for only seeing cars and trucks on the highway, for not seeing the Black and Brown kids in my neighborhood who are as deserving of clean air and good schools as every other kid in this state. We need to stop this freeway expansion before it further harms our kids. Implement congestion pricing, build the gaps, maybe build the noise wall if it will actually work, but do not expand this freeway. We can do so much better for our kids than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. We have Tori on her way over.
Welcome, Tori.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, hi, my name is Tori Hiru, and I'm here today representing Neighbors for Clean Air. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments uh regarding the expansion of I-5 and the impact that will have on Tubman Middle School. Um, our organization shares PPS's priority for Tubman to be a safe and healthy place for students to go to school. I also forgot to mention I used she/her pronouns. So those of us who follow the science um know that despite the inclination to assume that freeway expansions will reduce congestion and improve air quality, uh, the opposite is true. And I was happy to see um some of the board members, like um Dr. Moore, referencing that fact. Um, studies conducted in high-traffic urban areas like Los Angeles and Houston have invariably shown that expansion of freeways only contributes to congestion through induced demand. So while ODOT says the air quality will improve, the science, data, and history that we have at our fingertips review this. This choice would certainly negatively affect affect Tubman, where 70% of students are from Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities, and the air quality is already so bad that experts have recommended that student outdoor activities be limited, particularly during high-traffic periods. Health Effects Institute, the area most affected by traffic emissions adjacent to a freeway or really any major road, starts at about 1,500 feet. And as designed, this expansion will be will bring traffic within 30 feet of school. Children are most vulnerable to the long-term uh impacts from traffic because their lungs are still developing, so that they breathe on average about 50% more air per pound of body weight than we do as adults. A 2019 study found that students attending school near busy roads had lower rates of academic performance, higher absenteeism, and higher rates of disciplinary problems than those attending less polluted schools. The more traffic that you have on nearby roads, the larger the decline in scores on state standardized tests. We totally understand the motivation for moving the school and frankly, the moral high ground um that is there based on the fact that Tubman was there first. But we also want to ask the school board members about the need for discussions with albina community members about the future of the school. As many of you know, and some of you have stated, the albina community has been displaced time and time again, including for the building of the I-5 freeway. And Harriet Tubman has frequently been at the center of this history with broken promises and disregard. As such, it's more than simply a building. Furthermore, from an air quality perspective, PPS is already been forced to spend more than $12 million to reduce indoor health impacts to students and teachers. So moving the school at this point would really negate those efforts. And lastly, I really want to emphasize that it's unclear what site we can realistically categorize as safe territory for students to go to school. While air quality is especially bad at Tubman directly adjacent to the freeway, on the other side of the school, emissions are closer to what we call urban background levels. This does not mean those levels are safe or healthy for students to be breathing, merely that they resemble the conditions at many other schools throughout Portland. These background levels include levels of transportation pollution, like diesel particulate, at 10 to 30 times state health benchmarks. And I'm not going to go fully into the weeds, but those benchmarks are drastically less health-protective than the ones that we see in California. So it's even worse than that.
Tori, if I could go ahead and just ask you to wrap up with your last couple of thoughts, that'd be great.
I have just a little bit more. Uh, meanwhile, there are more than 100 schools in the Portland metro area that are in an unsafe distance from major roads, less than 100 yards from transportation emissions, that adversely affect the health of students and teachers. So given this reality, it's really important to seek solutions that don't require the expansion of freeways. We need to be reducing pollution pollution at all of our schools, not expanding fossil fuel infrastructure. So in conclusion, it's just frankly baffling to me that ODOT has not studied congestion pricing or other alternatives in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, Tori, appreciate it. Kara?
Yes, we have Joe Courtwright.
Hi, thanks again for the opportunity to participate, Joe Courtwright. I'm with No More Freeways, I'm an economist with City Observatory. I'd just like to make four quick points. First of all, the project that ODOT has modeled and represented to you is not the project they're proposing to build. We've discovered plans that show that this isn't just adding two auxiliary lanes for a short length of the freeway. They're building a 160-foot-wide roadway that is easily enough to accommodate 10 lanes. And that's what they plan to do. They're going to have a 10-lane freeway through here. So everything that you've heard about traffic just on the outset is untrue, because this will be a far larger project with vastly more traffic and consequently more pollution and different impacts. So on the basis of what they've modeled, that's simply wrong. Uh, but we also know that uh their modeling is wrong. Uh, they've totally uh ignored the the well documented effect of induced demand, that when you add more capacity, no matter what you call the lanes, it increases traffic. In fact, it's just about proportional. A 1% increase in capacity produces a 1% increase in vehicles. That's not reflected in ODOT's modeling, and that's wrong. The claims that uh Ms. Channel made about the air quality being better are based on those faulty assumptions about the nature of the project and the incorrect modeling. And she's also eliding the idea that air quality will be better because the fleet of cars will be different 20 years from now, that there'll be more electric cars and more efficient cars. That's not because of the project. In fact, if you don't build the project, you'll have less traffic and also cleaner cars, which is not something that they looked at. That is also not the. is not something that they looked at. That is also not the NEPA standard. You've heard them talk about the peer review. The peer review was basically hand-selected by ODOT. Nobody who was critical of the project was given the opportunity to present any information. And as Grace Kroniken, who led the peer review, told one of ODOT's committees, the HAB committee, a couple of weeks ago, "The peer review committee didn't look at all at the transportation modeling, which we know is flawed." In fact, they waived on it. So if you used the wrong transportation model, they did not validate the air quality analysis. And finally, if I could, I'd just make one more point. ODOT is turning its pockets inside out and telling you it doesn't have any money for anything else. ODOT routinely spends millions of dollars mitigating the damage that its projects do to the environment. It didn't use to pay for noise walls. It does now pay for noise walls. It pays for fairy shrimp habitat. It pays for wetlands. If you go to downtown Portland and look at the Justice Center and see the jail in the Justice Center, that was built by the Federal Highway Administration, because Rocky Butte Jail was affected adversely by the construction of I-205. So when they need to, ODOT can spend its money to fix the problems it solves. But it's not doing that. It's doubling down because it's building a much wider freeway that will make all the problems that they've created even worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, thanks to everyone who came. Kara, I think that was it, right? Perfect. Okay. So it is 6:35, so we're already a little bit beyond our time. We have on the agenda, for the rest of the agenda, we have legislative update and a state school fund budget advocacy agenda item. If it's okay with other members of the committee, I would last, Courtney, I believe you're going to be sending out a legislative update tomorrow. Maybe if we could focus on the state school funding issue and try and wrap up in about 10 minutes or so, that would be great. And then if there are questions from folks about the legislative update tomorrow, we can handle those through email. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Take it away, Courtney.
Thanks, Director Scott. While the big issue, of course, has been the K-12 budget, the state school fund budget came in at $9.1 billion. That was the co-chair's framework after the governor's budget was released earlier in the year. The $9.1 is insufficient. I've shared that with you all. You all know that. You're hearing from lots of folks about why that is the case. So the advocacy coalition in Salem has been pushing really hard on 9.6, knowing that you have to ask for everything, right? And so yesterday, in a kind of turn of events, the Joint Subcommittee on Education passed a state school fund budget of $9.3 billion. After the day before, late in the day before, there was a surprising letter from the governor to legislative leadership that said, "If I get a $9.3 billion budget that doesn't have strings attached related to equity, then I'm going to veto it." So the House, or I mean, the Joint Subcommittee kind of responded with passing that budget. And included in the passage was a separate bill to work out the math, which is that you still need $200 million to fill that difference. And so they're proposing in this bill that passed in the committee, that's going to the full committee tomorrow, the funding would be coming from the Education Stability Fund. And so that is, I think, what part of the issue is, is we haven't had a revenue forecast yet. We don't know what that's going to look like next week. So there's a lot of activity happening in Salem around the K-12 budget. We've been making the point that, and you all know this, that the state school fund is the operating budget of school districts. It's not the targeted, you know, high school success or Measure 98. It's not the targeted Student Investment Account, Student Success Act. It's not the one-time federal dollars. This is the perennial operating budget that pays for salaries of all of our staff primarily. So that's where we are, I think, you know, and we continue to meet with legislators to drive home that point. We're also, to Dr. Moore's, Director and Dr. Moore's points, the CSL issues, the current service level issues, and the way it's calculated, we have been educating all of our elected officials about that difference and that particular point, because so much of this is about education and making sure, especially with the new folks who are coming in, why it is that we are upset about the way the 50-50 split is calculated, how we roll up our budgets for the next biennium. So that message is being delivered. We're hitting it home. And so that's kind of where we are. We'll see what the Joint Ways and Means Committee does tomorrow. And then we'll go into the revenue forecast next week on the 19th.
Courtney, this is a technical issue. We don't need to dive in here, but I was surprised to see that LFO actually had pegged sort of current service level budget at $9 billion even. And I would love to sort of explore, and again, I think we're beyond that at this point in the session, but I'm thinking about for two years from now, sort of explore a little bit more that disconnect, you know, having been someone at Federal OMB that did a lot of those projections and got a lot of pushback. I mean, this is really a, at that level, it really is a factual question in terms of what's being taken into account and what's not. And I think that it makes me wonder if we couldn't solve a lot of these back and forth, if we had a little bit better understanding and maybe some education around, you know, what it is that they're looking at versus what it is that districts are actually looking at on the ground.
That's a great point, Director Scott. And we have a slide that I'll share in my update tomorrow that kind of maps out the differences between how LFO takes into account not just the roll-up costs, but the PERS estimates, healthcare estimates, all kinds of tricky things that are, frankly, I get a little bogged down in the details because it's complicated, but I think you all would benefit from seeing the slide.
That's great, because I actually, when I read that in the paper the other day, I was like, it must be a misprint, because it was saying that we actually, that the legislature was, if they went to 9.3, would be $300 million over what they were recommending. And so just because that's been broadcast broadly, I think it's really important for us to be able to explain that and understand sort of why it's different, because I think the average community member might read like, hey, they're getting $300 million more than was anticipated. How come that is not enough? So it's a great question, because I thought it was somewhat puzzling, and I actually thought it was an error, but apparently it's not.
Yeah, it's all very confusing. And yes, the average, if those who are in the middle of this don't get it, then how can, you know, average parent or community member understand it? So it's very complicated. And I'll share what I can. And then, you know, perhaps at a future governmental meeting, we can have some kind of presentation on this, if that's of interest.
It would be to me, but I'm sort of a geek about this stuff, so.
Well, we could also set up a separate meeting that doesn't have a clause.
Go ahead, Rita.
It would be to me as well. So can you say a little bit more about what the governor means by equity strings?
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell you too much, because I don't really know where this is coming from. There has been a lot of talk about weights in the formula this session, and there's been a work group that I don't get invited to most of the time, but I've been to, and Claire has presented about some things from a PPS perspective in the past. The work group has, in my opinion, from what I've heard, been working in good faith to just talk through some of this, like, why is the state school fund, for example, not modeled? Why couldn't we model the state school fund on the Student Success Act and have more of those kinds of investments, equity-focused investments? And that is a large conversation. You know, it's got to have the right people in the room. It's not a one-session conversation, in my opinion. So that work group, I think there's a connection there, but I'm, you know, I'm jumping to conclusions perhaps, but I think there are a lot of advocates who really want to see that change, and I think maybe that's where this is coming from. But again, there's nothing, to my knowledge, that's come out yet from that work group that's, you know, on a platter, ready to go.
Do you get the sense that there's an understanding that school districts need a substantial proportion of funding that doesn't have strings attached? I mean, we have to keep the lights on.
Yeah, I think back to my earlier point, Director Moore, I think this is about education and really making sure everybody, school funding is very complex, and local property taxes, you know, we have a local option. How does this all fit together? It's hard to explain, and I think a lot of people don't understand it. And so there, I think, is a misconception that somehow we're flush with cash. And we've been, that's part of the message we've been trying to deliver to legislators is, and they get it, you know, and we're meeting, you know, we are meeting with Democrats because they're in charge, but they get it and they understand that there is, this is our base budget. This is what we, you know, this is how we operate. So it's, 9.3 is better than 9.1. If it were, you know, we'd love for it to be higher. We'll see if the forecast comes in with a lot more revenue, then maybe there's a potential, there's the potential for more. But even the Speaker and I mean, in an awesome, or earlier this week, did not indicate that that was likely. So we shall see. We're going to continue to push on it. I know that Director Constan is going to work on a resolution for the meeting on the 25th around pushing for 9.6. I think that is still worth doing. If I hear that that's not worth doing, I'll let you know.
I wasn't peeping in on this conversation, because I saw that as the last agenda item, we had advocacy on state school fund. But yes, I'm planning to do that, and we'll prepare it. And the only thing that would keep us from bringing it forward at our board meeting on the 25th is if Courtney advises that really that conversation has already concluded, and it's just, wouldn't make an impact away in that time.
Thank you. And yeah, I will definitely, again, I think we still, it's still very much worth it, but things are changing all the time. And if that sounds, if it seems like it's not worth our time, we won't. But I think it's, I do think it's worth the time, even if things start moving fast. It's important to send a message that we have a lot of needs, and some of them are being met through these other resources. And this one is of particular interest, because this is how we keep our lights on, as you said.
And can I just add in here for the record, that a 9.3 budget is equivalent to a $19 million shortfall for PPS. $19 million, not peanuts. So I'm happy to hear that they're raising their sights, but I am astonished at how many people really have no conception of either what the implications are for districts of 9.3, or what the implications are for a $19 million shortfall.
Okay, other comments? And Amy, this was our last agenda item to talk about this advocacy. So I think we've sort of covered through that. Any other comments or thoughts?
More to come tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Courtney, for pulling everything together. Thanks, Julia, for the suggestion and work to help get ODOT here for the presentation tonight. I think it was helpful, and I know we're going to have more conversations on that moving forward.
May I just ask, how would you like questions to get back to them? Do you want to just, I mean, do you want to organize, or do you just want to send them to me?
I think if board members, if board members have additional questions, why don't you send them to Courtney, so they all go as a package? And then if the responses we get back, send out to the whole board. Would be great.
Okay. Can I ask about sort of next steps for the board? So is the full board going to consider anything as a follow-on to this? Should I be more blunt? I'll be more blunt. I have real questions.
Courtney and I are working on a resolution.
Okay, but I have real questions about the, what we are accomplishing by staying visibly engaged in a process that appears to be deeply, deeply flawed, and may just be a bad-faith PR exercise on the part of ODOT.
Here's my perspective, because some organizations have chosen to exit and others have stayed at the table. There was a conversation and a request that ODOT partner with us, and it seems like for us to be, and you know, certainly, I know Courtney's engaged in a regular basis on the technical, with the technical committee, is that, you know, it's hard to partner or have a seat at the table if you choose not to be at the table. I mean, of course, the board could choose that, but I think also, or the district could choose that. On the other hand, it's awfully hard to complain about not being included if you choose to remove yourself from the process. The two things that are in the pipeline for PPS is, one, a, and I think this would be important for the board to consider before we take any sort of action, is for the community, the process that Shanice is going to lead with the community, to hear what the school community and the feeder programs think about what steps we should take before the board just deciding what we're going to do. So that's one thing. And I think that's scheduled in the next six to eight weeks, but Shanice should clarify that. And then the second thing that is scheduled to happen is the facility staff is, this is under Dan Young's leadership, is putting together what actually a more realistic assessment of what the cost would be if the community choice was, we would like to have the school moved, and what that would cost. And sort of two components, because I know Scott put out at the very beginning, sort of $100 million is at the back of the envelope. And at this point in time, we're looking at getting a sharper picture on, you know, what land would be available within the Albina district, because we'd have to have a place. And there's a number of, you know, there's a footprint that's needed. And so again, Dan's team is looking at that, what it would cost, because obviously, if you move it, PPS, there's a cost to PPS if we use our own land. And then second, also, a look at, obviously, we have Kellogg as one example of what a middle school would cost, but getting sharper on that so that we have that and we can engage with ODOT and frankly, state leaders about the cost of moving it, if that's what the community indicates is their preferred path.
So I just, I really appreciate that. And actually, I thought one of the most compelling things that came out, and I know people have been talking about it before, we talked about it in our last meeting too, but just that reminder that we do need to engage with the community on this. And I might have misheard her, but I think one of the people testifying tonight mentioned that she's not interested in, you know, in Tubman moving. And I think for me, this is one of those moments where, you know, from my perspective, that feels like it solves a lot of, moving the school solves a lot of issues and does a lot of, you know, restores a lot of historical wrong. But the community may not feel that way. And I think that as a board, we need to be ready, and I need to be ready to pivot, that, you know, that feels like the sort of fixing, again, this historical wrong. If the community wants to keep it there, then it becomes an issue of what are the mitigation and/or, you know, stopping the project, right? It's sort of, there are different outcomes depending on what the community wants. So I think that process is really, it's really important and essential. So I'm glad we keep elevating that.
So I think those are important processes for us to move forward on. I do think, and I'm not saying this one way or the other, I do think those are somewhat independent of whether we're engaged in the planning process, or at what level, especially because ODOT continues to lie. You know, they keep saying, you know, it's a new day, we're acting, you know, but they're not. They are not. So, you know, at what point do we say enough already?
And I'm curious, Scott, what's the advantage of walking away from the table?
What's the advantage of staying? And giving some, gee, PPS was a partner through this. We run the risk of looking like we have given our stamp of approval on it, to it.
There's no mistaking that we haven't given our stamp of approval. I mean, the record is full of instances in which are.
Understood.
I asked for a recorded vote on, when we offered a standard and had a recorded vote on it. There's no question that PPS isn't going along with the project. And I think that's clear for the last year and a half.
Yeah. So I just would say that from time to time, we should evaluate. evaluate our continued, at what level we want to continue. And again, I right now, I'm not like one way or another. But at a certain point, if somebody keeps lying to you, you need to act.
Yeah, maybe, Scott, the next like milestone stone is, as Chair Scott mentioned, is when our community process and we have a sense of what the community wants, because then we may have an idea of what what the best forum and path for us would be in order to affect what the community desires.
So I I'm a firm believer in bad behavior that carries no negative consequences is an encouragement to continued bad behavior. And I have become aware of at least several instances of what I consider to be bad behavior, most notably the withholding of information about the additional taking of PPS property that has apparently been on their books for three years. And my understanding is that PPS has consistently requested all information regarding the impact of this I five project on Harriet Tubman. So a deliberate decision was made by ODOT to withhold that information from PPS. And I have not been intimately involved in this, but if that is in fact the case, I would hope that at the very minimum, we would lodge a formal complaint that that we're being called partners, but the partnership is apparently only going one way. So some kind of consequences should be imposed when you know, a a partner is not acting in good faith.
I'll just say from my perspective, which is somewhat from the outside on this, I I don't think it feels to me like like ODOT has been hammered on this again and again and again over the last couple of years publicly and in the media and and what I what I would worry about. And I I actually agree with Scott, we need to reevaluate routinely and sort of ask the question. I think that's exactly right. My concern would be walking away. You know, as things continue to move forward, the less involved we are, the harder it is actually to call out, you know, ODOT on these things. And and I just, it also frankly gives give gives them the ability to say, well, you know, folks walked away from the table. So how can we partner with them when they're not willing to sit at the table? So I I just want to make sure we're not giving any any of those arguments, right, to them. I I do agree, we need to be careful. And they talked tonight. The 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 point I think Scott again made about, you know, that it looks like PPS is on board, that was part of their talking points tonight. As they, you know, noted in their slides, all the places were involved. And so I do think that is a real danger. But I guess I'm just more philosophically. I'm a big believer that when you're at the table is when you can really object and stand up and and jump up and down and go to the media and and talk about the problems that are happening. And I I just feel like this is, this project is not playing out well for ODOT or the state or the governor. And I think that's because the people involved continue to raise, you know, really important questions.
So yeah, I I I think, you know, so we should, we should arrange a good time to do pros cons and and come to where we are right now and when to evaluate in a couple of months. I think those are all good points. I've heard really valid points for staying at the table and walking away from the table. But let's, let's do a session where we get all that out there and come to some decision and and go from there. And again, the, you know, if it's walk away from the official table, then what are our tactics for being engaged in guerrilla warfare to to unofficially engage going forward? So I I think I think we can we need to have a session where we get down to it, come to an agreement and move forward, agree to reevaluate at a certain point in time after that. So Andrew, can you move that as as our chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Was that a specific motion?
Well, it's a suggestion to the chair that that we
Reevaluate our
Yeah, that this committee runs through that that evaluation process.
So what I was hearing for for next steps, so in the very short term, any questions from tonight, you get those to Courtney, we'll we'll engage in that process. And then and then I I actually like what Julia said about you know, as we go through this engagement, learn more about what our community wants, that feels like a good time to then come back and and decide, you know, what what is PPS's position going to be and how will we engage moving forward? So I I think that's probably a few months out, but Scott, I mean, I agree with you that it's a conversation we need to have.
Yeah. And and I I like Rita's suggestion. Maybe one thing we do pretty immediately is lodge some kind of formal protest or you know, effectively do that and do it loudly.
Fine with Director Bailey's and Director Moore's suggestion on that front. I also would be interested in Courtney's point of view, since you engage in that sort of the technical, the technical team.
Yeah, I can say that our technical team is looking at a lot of these questions raised about air quality and other other issues like soil stability. And we haven't seen any paper from that from them yet. So I think we'd want to wait and see. I mean, I'll check in with Dan on timeline for that. I'm not sure what our timeline is, but I think that'll be instructive. The I the highway cover work is you know, predicated on a project happening. So I think that's a little bit of a different. I I don't think that's as relevant, but I think I think I would want to know whether there was any significant findings of this of the consult of the third-party consultant first before we launched into a plan. But that's just, you know, I think Dan could offer maybe a different suggestion, but politically, I think we should get some some answers first.
The so I I am interested in, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just want to make a clarifying point. Answers to questions that we ask, not just answers that we're getting from them based on, you know, maybe not the right question.
I'm I'm real interested in their wealth building. I have to say, just off the top, I am incredibly cynical when I hear that. It's but I will do some due diligence to see you know, if it's how much of it is talk and how much of it is a real strategy.
There is a very strong commitment and push by minority contractors because of the size of the contracting project that this will be. And I'm I'm not stating, I don't have enough information to validate it or not, but it's been stated over and over again by black minority contractors that this is going to be, that is how the wealth creation is happening. And there's a bit of, I will say, an undercurrent of PPS is standing in the way of black economic empowerment by holding up the project, which which is a narrative that is Scott, I'm happy to connect with you offline about where that's originating from, but sort of it's in either or, the only way that you know, PPS has to step aside so that actually this these economic, this economic value can return to the community. But there's a very strong narrative of that happening.
Yeah, I know. Income is not wealth. I I those, the distinction is very important. And I can argue about whether four years of a good salary actually with no guarantee of a continuing salary actually gives you the potential to build wealth.
Well, the other thing is, what what are the what are the alternative uses of eight hundred million dollars? And could we find projects that could be equally impactful for what are they calling disadvantaged business enterprises that would not that would not jeopardize Harriet Tubman or produce more you know, increased risk of horrendous climate change impacts? You know, it's this is not the only game in town potentially.
Okay, so I'm I I don't think building a baseball stadium falls under that. So just let it let it go.
All right, it's seven oh five and I'm hungry. So I'm going to go ahead and end the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for the conversation tonight. It was important and a good one. And we will continue moving forward. So with that, the Intergovernmental Committee is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.